It is now 3:00 PM. I am calling the St. Louis County Council Committee of the Whole, March 2nd, 3:00 PM. I'm calling it to order. We will be discussing the proposed rule changes for the council moving forward for 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. We are going to be looking today at some proposed rule changes for the operations of this council. Many of the suggestions that we have here have been suggested by many of our constituents in hopes that we can have a better transparency of how our meetings are conducted. These rules have been out for about four weeks now, and so we asked several, all the members, actually, if they had any kinds of suggestions. And to this point, we had one, and then, of course, on last Friday, we had several to come in. So I'm assuming all of you have the rules in front of you, and we will go through and ask any questions, first of all. So before we go there, we had initially, the county council's office has been engaged with this from the beginning. We had concerns. We wanted to put in a consent calendar to hopefully expedite some time on the agenda. The council's office thought that was problematic, so we took that out. We have been looking right now at, I believe, it's section 11, Rule 11 regarding the changes in the resolutions. Several opportunities came up in terms of people asking what resolutions or binding and what are honorary, that kind of thing. And so we thought it would be interesting to have a delineation between the various types of resolutions that we have. The county council's office has indicated again that that might be problematic, and so I have instructed the Jen to remove that from the proposed rules that we have. And with that, we also looked at returning, to some degree, the opportunity for people or the public to comment as they had previously. We noticed that we did have quite a number of people that would come and give their opinions about what we were doing, and then, I don't know if that was the purpose or not, but we have had a significant decrease in that participation. I'm sure that was not the intent, but that was a result. And so we want to make sure that folks who are not technically advantaged and have those kinds of technologies in their homes are also able to participate in the process in terms of getting public comment. Councilwoman Harder is not on. I believe that is really the only thing that we substantive changes that we have made. We left in, Councilwoman Clancy, during her time, had changed the times of meetings. I noticed that she did go back to the 6:30. I don't have a problem with that. If anyone else has a problem with that, you know, that might be something we can look at. But now the meetings are all going to be at 6:30 on the Tuesdays. And so I think that, basically, those are the substantive changes that we have made. Any questions at this point? Any questions? Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand correctly, and Jen, you may want to speak to this. But if I understood Councilwoman Days correctly, the proposed changes to Rule 11 have now been withdrawn, and there will be no changes to Rule 11? Is that correct?
I would say that's a question for the sponsors of the resolution, sir.
Okay. Then whoever is sponsoring the resolution, is that correct? That the proposed changes to Rule 11?
Thank you. Thank you. Genevieve, did you not get an email from my office to that effect?
I did, ma'am.
Okay.
So, again, is my question, yes, that Rule 11 will not be changed?
That is correct.
Okay.
It will be, it will not be included in this legislation. That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention that Councilman Harder has joined the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Harder. Councilwoman Clancy, I believe, Councilwoman Clancy, I believe you had a question?
Yes. Thank you for obliging to my request for this hearing. I asked for this hearing last week and was happy to see it scheduled today. I had quite a few suggestions and questions about the proposed changes. It looks like we just resolved one of those about the resolutions, so I will be happy to see an updated version that reflects those proposals to the resolutions struck. I do want to comment on a few things. So, to your last point, Madam Chair, about the council meeting times, those actually, I don't think are covered in the rules. That's a matter of administration and scheduling, but correct me if I'm wrong. I actually, when the clerk, the clerk put together the draft schedule in December, and I decided not to make any changes to that draft because I knew that we would, you know, we didn't have a chair yet established for the council in January. I actually thought it worked really well to have 1 o'clock meetings one day a month, so I would be okay with going back to that, but I understand that I might not be the only person that, you know, has an opinion on that, but I think it allowed for, you know, I collected some data in terms of public participation and actually did not see that public participation decreased by changing that, and I think it's a, I think that it allows actually probably for some different people to participate in the meetings by having a different change in the time one day a month. So I would be perfectly fine with going back to that, but that's a matter, I think, that can be discussed outside of this because it's not covered in our rules. I do want to go back to the public comment process. So I agree that I've heard some concerns from community members about wanting to have the opportunity to go back to emailed comments, and I believe what you are proposing in this, if I'm, if I understand it correctly, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we are not reading aloud the email comments. They are simply getting emailed and then entered into the journal. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's not completely reverting back to what we're doing it prior to the rules being changed last fall. So the other thing is too, I would like to talk with, and I think I raised this in an email, I would like to talk with IT about the idea of setting up not a centralized inbox, but a standardized web form to collect public comments. I think that that could be helpful to minimize any spam or form letters that are coming in, which I think all of us can agree was an issue that we were seeing last time. And so I think, you know, I had some informal conversations with our IT department about this a few months ago, and I think that that's something that they felt like they could do, and that would also be something advisable, again, to cut down on any spam. So I would encourage us to look into those changes, and I'm happy to, you know, to take the lead on that piece of it.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't realize, or they didn't tell me, that there was a significant amount of spam that came through. I was not aware of that, and I guess, I don't know if Councilwoman Harder was aware of that either, and that's why perhaps it was not addressed, but I appreciate that sentiment. Thank you. Councilwoman Harder, did you, have you, did you notice any appreciable amount of spam that came through? He's having technical difficulties. Anyway, all right, so we'll move on until he's able to get back, but I appreciate that. And I was not aware, I thought that you, as a chair, would set the scheduling for the meetings. I was not aware that that was under the auspices of the clerk. So either way, it's fine. Any other questions or comments regarding what we are proposing today? I do want to give, I do want to give Councilman Harder, if he's able to get back on, an opportunity since he is co-sponsoring this with me. Councilwoman Clancy?
Yeah, I did have a few other comments that were emailed to you that I wanted to go through because I hadn't had a response to those yet. So I covered the one about public comments, which is in Rule 5. Rule 10, I think, also was something that I had some questions about. So I pointed out, as I mentioned through email, that typically it has not been in practice that the clerk distributes legislation to council members. That is what is stated here in these rules changes. I don't know if that was an intentional rule change.
What are you on to, in number 10?
Rule 10, yes. So you'll, as you will notice, we typically get our legislation from the county council's office, directly from Jen.
But now it, now I believe Jen has decided that she wants that to come from Diane.
Can I stand there, Councilwoman? Well, actually, historically, the legislation has been delivered by the county council's office to the administrative director for distribution to the council members and staff. It was really just beginning with the virtual meeting situation that our office began emailing that directly. But the historical practice and that the rules were returned to are that the legislation is delivered to the clerk, and the clerk distributes those to the council members and the council staff.
Okay. So that's helpful context. I wasn't aware of that, of that background information. I mean, I think that that is fine. I also, you know, have the question, well, what's the most efficient process? Do we need that, that middle person in the administrative director to forward the legislation? What's the point of that? Or is it just more efficient in terms of actually getting the legislation into hands of council members quickly for it to come to the counselor, from the councilor's office, as it has been? That's just a question, I guess, I want to put on the table.
Genevieve, do you want to respond to that?
Our office thinks that that is a better practice for us to deliver that to your administrative director and for the administrative director to distribute.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes. And then my last point also, you know, I did have a couple of questions also pertaining to Rule 10, not just about who distributes legislation, but also about the piece about subbills, resolutions, and orders coming down no later than two hours prior to the meeting. I presume that the problem that that is intended to fix is that sometimes we get, we get legislation at 6 o'clock or 15, or even later, and that poses a problem when people are expected to vote on it that night. I do think that this is a problem that needs to be addressed, and I like the way that you have it here. I'm a little concerned about the implications that could have for subbills, such as, say, there might be something really pressing that we might actually all come to consensus to after, say, like a 4:30 or 4 o'clock hearing, and then because of this rule change, we don't have the time to get the updated legislation out to the council members. But I do suppose we have a workaround in our rules because we do have a mechanism in our rules to suspend the rules. So if there really was something that was urgent and pressing, we could use that workaround.
And I think it also goes to, and for lack of another word, the training of all of us so that we don't run and rush to the last minute to get these kinds of things done. We do have an opportunity to deliberate on much of this. For instance, if we're in, in, in committee hearings, particularly during the budget time, it's very difficult to start getting information at 6 o'clock and 6:15 when we could perhaps be in the budget. So I appreciate that concern. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Webb?
Yes, ma'am. And so I, I guess I haven't been through a lot of the process, but I was going to ask for more time to digest that information because even in two hours, if I'm coming out of committee of the whole or whatever, that's still limited time, and so I was going to ask for more time. But if everybody's content with two hours, I'll go with the crew.
What kind of, what suggestion did you have?
I was going to say by midday. So by 12 noon on council day, we need to have legislation flow to us. I mean, it's hard to get all that legislation, read it, digest it, go and ask people questions, and then come back and formulate, okay, this is how I'm going to vote, other than whether or not you are impacted by it. And so maybe that'll come with time, but it's just taking me a little bit longer to go through all this legislation the day of.
Let's hear from the other members of the council to see if they are amenable to a change of that. And of course, if we say two hours before 6:30, that would be 4:30. If you're looking at perhaps noon or 1, maybe we can, maybe we can split the difference. But let me hear from the other council members about that proposition. Councilman Fitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am absolutely interested in a minimum of two hours. That's been one of my biggest complaints, is that sometimes we get, even after 6:30, we're getting legislation we're expected to vote on during that meeting, and sometimes it's by design. It's by design to get it late, so you don't have an opportunity to do that, and this would certainly prevent those by-design late legislative notices. So, you know, perhaps we can actually look at more than two hours. I don't know about noon. You know, I would say I'd be perfectly fine with a minimum of two, as suggested.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Tracus?
Thank you. I certainly don't have a problem with the concept. I think a good idea. I want to take a look, though, at the flip side of that, which is the bonus on the councilor's office to draft all of the proposed legislation, all of the proposed subbills, all of the requested information, and get it to the administrator. So noon may not be realistic in that regard if we expect them to be able to be flexible and docile enough to get us requested subbills or whatever the case may be, that one of us may have requested later than would be preferable. So I would suggest 3 o'clock as a compromise so that the council's office has sufficient time when given requests to prepare the, whatever, legislation or resolution or whatever it may be.
Thank you.
Whatever it may be.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tracus. Councilwoman Harder, I thought I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry for the, I've got work going here, and they plugged in a piece of equipment and blew the circuit I was on, so everything went dead. Couple things, yeah. 2 o'clock seemed to be the compromise, and maybe 3, maybe it's 3. But the issue here, I think, is a, is a little bit deep-seated from the standpoint of disciplining the rest of the support staff to get this stuff to us quicker. With the advent of iCompass and getting people used to that, things should move quicker and should move, you know, we're not handling paper and making copies and running it up and downstairs and all this kind of stuff. So I think it should go a little bit quicker if we get disciplined with that system and, and with our support on Tuesdays. And it's never a mystery, there's always going to be something on Tuesdays that are going to change. So for support staff to, you know, make sure that there will be changes and to prepare for it, I think, will be important.
Okay. So we have Councilwoman Webb. Would you be amenable to a 3:00 PM deadline? Would that help you, or do you need it earlier? What are you thinking along those lines?
Yes, ma'am. I can compromise to 3 o'clock. I apologize if it's an inconvenience to anyone, but I just need a little bit more time to digest some of this stuff.
We're fine. We're all there to make sure that we all do what we need to do. Any, is that, let's just say a consensus. Can we do a consensus of 3:00 PM for that instead of two hours before?
Councilwoman?
Yes.
This is Genevieve. Can I just suggest that you make that an amount of time versus a time of day? Because it's possible not every meeting will start at, at 6:30.
So we're saying, what was it, three hours before?
Or three hours.
Three hours before the beginning of?
Three and a half. Three or three and a half.
Councilmembers?
Three and a half.
Three is fine.
I'm fine with that.
Three and a half is good, then. And I don't think, Jen, we need a motion to that effect if we have the consensus of the entire council here. Is that correct?
If the sponsors of the resolution would like to make that change, I certainly can make that change.
I think we can make that happen. Any further discussion on the proposed rules that we will be forwarding forth this evening? Any further discussions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
We had some, so apparently our staff members hadn't been looped in to this, even though this has significant changes to their role, or not changes necessarily. This requires a lot of them to implement, and I don't know. We did receive an email from our administrative director on Friday noting some of those changes, and I am not aware of any resolution or any attempt to address the concerns that were surfaced there. So I'd like to know how that matter has been handled before we are asked to move forward on this.
Well, I think that Diane sent a, sent a, an email to us. I did not, I did not read that thoroughly. Diane, you want to articulate your concerns, please?
Yes, ma'am. So I think a couple of our questions would be, of course, some of the adjustments will require us to make changes on our end, especially on the iCompass platform. But we did have several questions. I didn't write this.
Are the adjustments to iCompass would be what?
So you have to go into the system, and some things are set up to happen automatically, and we would need to make sure that those are changed so that?
Can you give me an example of that?
So the order of business is currently set up in iCompass, so you have changed the order of business, so we would need to make sure that that gets updated and test that going forward. Also, the, I did have a question about the video participation by members. Once we are, that's once we are back in the chambers. There is no time requirement there that I need to be notified?
I thought we put in 24 hours for notification there. I may be incorrect about that, but I thought that was a 24-hour notification.
It was originally, yes.
I think it was removed. In the copy I received, it was removed, the 24-hour requirement. And, and, you know, in all fairness, because some things, emergencies happen, I mean, we're just asking, if possible, to give, you know, at least 24 hours' notice to the administrative director, if you can, that you would like to participate remotely so that we have time to set up all of the different variables on our end. That could be added back in.
Is 24 hours enough time?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
That would be very helpful. And then regarding, yeah, regarding the public forum, we just, once again, there are notices on the website, on iCompass, on the agenda, places where we will need to make adjustments to all of that. We will need to get that all updated going forward so that we have everything consistent. And the emailed comments, I don't know if you were able to read over that, but we are wondering if we need to limit emailed comments to 400 words. Since they are not being read, we have to take the time to check any of the emails that look like they're close to 400 words, then we have to adjust them and put them back in some way to the journal. So we're wondering, as far as emailed comments, if it hurts to just submit their entire comment, which would then be available.
Okay.
Okay. Because the three minutes, I mean, we're not reading it, so the three-minute allotment really doesn't apply here. So that's just a suggestion. It will slow down production of the journal if we have to go through emails and, and adjust them. But I am talking about, like, if we would start to get 100, 150, something like that, even 50 would take us some time.
So we hope we don't have that, that situation that we had earlier this year with the 2,000 or comments. That, that was unheard of. I understand your, I understand your concern on that. When we had, you were reading those, and we were limited to, was it 300, 300 words? And I believe you all had to go through that process as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
You had to go through that as well to do that? And so I'm looking at that. Is that some intermountable barrier for you?
If we are not reading them, I'm not sure I understood your question.
So you, at this particular point, if we go back to reading them, you will have to segment out 300 words or the three-minute time period, and so with this, you understand what I'm saying? So you've had to do that before, and so I'm looking at the 400. Is there some kind of a barrier for that that would prevent you from doing that? Now, if you're suggesting that we just leave it open, we can certainly consider that as well.
Yes, I'm asking if you can just leave it open because then all we have to do is compile the emails.
To cut the page.
Yeah. All we'd have to do is compile the emails probably from IT and just attach them to the journal as they are. If we have to go through each individual one and make sure they're not over 400 words, that's going to take much more time for us to compile that.
I see you. Councilwoman Tracus?
Thank you, but Ms. Valencia just answered my question. They just simply attach the written comments to the journal. They don't transcribe them, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Clancy. I believe you had your, you're on mute. You're on mute?
Oh. This is where the web form, I think, would come in handy because they could set up a standardized web form that cuts people off after 400 words. It would also require people to put their name and zip code, which I believe is what we're requiring of the commenters, because also I see a problem that would violate our rules if we don't have a commenter's name and zip code. And the only way for us to do that, absent this web form I'm suggesting, is for our council staff to manually go through, which is the problem that they have surfaced to us. It is time-consuming, manual labor on their part, and I would argue their time is better spent elsewhere.
So with Diane's suggestion, that will not be a problem? Is that correct, Diane?
That is correct. We also included adding that a first name, last name, and zip code also be submitted when they're emailing their comments. So if we went to a standardized form, that would take care of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I haven't heard any arguments against a standardized form, so I'm not sure why we would, we would shake that, why we would dismiss that. And it does appear there's going to be, I mean, perhaps it's because you want to move this tonight, but it appears there's going to be at least one minor change, and if we're going to go again, if we're going to move forward in the spirit of the very rules we're changing right now, we've missed our own deadline of 3 o'clock to consider anything.
Yeah, we understand that. We understand, but I think it's important that everyone has an opportunity to weigh in on this as well. That is, that is, Councilwoman Harder?
Yeah, I would also, a standardized form would be good as long as it is cut and pasteable, because some people will write their comments, you know, in their own, in Word or something like that, that they can take it, cut it, copy it, and drop it in to that standardized form, you know, on the day of or whatever it may be. You know, it's tough to get online and type like a blog of your comments and then, you know, spell-check it and all that stuff. So I think whatever IT comes up with, I think it needs to be user-friendly when it comes to cut and paste.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you. And the whole purpose, the whole purpose of this is to make sure that we have as many people who want to participate in this process have the opportunity to do so. That's, that's all. That's all. Any other comments at this particular time? Any other comments? Yes, Diane?
I just had a couple more, if I may.
Okay.
So as an administrative question, we just need to know which sequence letter to start with going forward, since we're not at the beginning of the year, and I think the rules specify starting at the beginning of the year with the sequence A. I would just need to know where, do you want me to start with A, or do you want me to start, figure out, go through the calendar and figure out where we are? That's just an administrative question I would need to know going forward.
Correct. I got that. And we can, and as far as I'm concerned, you start with the first one, and you choose each week, you go to the next one, the next sequence, and the next sequence, starting when these rules are passed.
So you would want to start at A, no matter when it is this time of the year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then Rule 11 regarding the resolutions, I understand that that's not going to be in there now.
Correct.
I think that that's, I think that's okay. And then regarding the digital slides, we're just asking And then regarding the digital slides, we're just asking that, going forward, that council members give as much advance notice as possible if they intend to suspend any rules and what the rules will be. Because thinking about getting the digital slide up in time for the public to understand what's going on is going to be a little tricky in real time just because how quickly those motions can be made and we're already moving on. So, okay.
And I think, I think that for the most part, you are aware when there is a rule change or a, we suspend the rules. I think for the most part, you're aware of that. And so that can be taken care of. And let me, and that's, Chris's question, and I think, Chris, you had your hand up for a comment there?
Yes, ma'am. Just so we're aware, and I know for your office, I prepared a PowerPoint with the current rules by slide. So that's easily enough accomplished with the new rules. But understand that then we will be sharing the screen as we kind of toyed with at the last meeting with pictures and different things. So to put up the rule, I'll have to share the screen on the, so people see that on the video. And then by the time we get to a vote, I'll have to take that off so that we can meet the legal requirement from the councillor's office to show each of you in whatever rotation we're using to vote. Does that make sense what I'm putting?
It does.
Just all aware that that's the mechanics of what we have to do.
Absolutely. And I think we, you discussed that with our staff. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilman Harder?
Chris and I talked a week or so ago. He mentioned something about having a kind of a pause between certain parts of the agenda so that iCompass and what he needs to do and what Diane needs to do can catch up. And maybe it was dealing with the slides or switching from resident comments to something else. Chris, do you remember that discussion?
Yeah, so what we did was, if you remember, we had the unfortunate incident when a citizen had finished their comments. I had muted them, moved them over, but it didn't mute. And so they were making extraneous comments as our meeting was trying to go forward. So I talked with Chuck at IT. And so I have a master mute option where I can mute everybody. And then that kind of is like acts as kind of a reset. And then, so if we grand pause, because of course, the panelists can unmute themselves at any time. But if there's just that grand pause, it gives us a second to make sure that all the attendees are muted, then we can go on without any more recurrences of that unfortunate interruption. The only other thing I'll mention is that I've talked with Diane and with the council chair days that as we move through different things, it is helpful, you know, we get into a mode and we're just clicking along and we're doing it. But understand, I'm literally having to click each of you up on a screen. If we go too fast, my dropdown menu, everyone's real narrow. And there have been a couple of occasions where I clicked on the wrong council person. By the time I get to the right council person, we're on to another person's in the vote. So my advice, as I've mentioned to you and as Diane and Chuck and I have talked, we just have to take it a little slower to make sure we're getting the best video presentation for our citizens.
And thank you for that because I did not ask you that question, but I did ask Diane that question. If we were perhaps moving a little too quickly for her, I should have asked you. And so I apologize for that. But note that most of these that we're talking about now will only be applicable while we are in the pandemic and while we are meeting remotely. We are hopefully that we won't be doing this too much longer. And so this will not be even, there will not be issues for this. So any other comments or questions? All right, so we will have Councilman Harder and I will look at what has been discussed at this meeting. And we will go back and look and make the necessary revisions that we think came out of this meeting that were applicable. And then we will be presenting this resolution. Don't think we're going to go with that this week. So again, this is four weeks in the making and we're hoping that we can get this done sooner rather than later. A lot of our constituents want to participate. They want to make sure that they have that opportunity. And I think this goes a long way into doing that. Any further questions? Any further comments for this committee? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this?
No, we do not.
We do not. All right, if there's no further business, then I would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Fitch.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Thank you very much.